Sheriff Dobbs with the First United Methodist Church to open our meeting in prayer.
Good morning, everyone.
Morning.
Thank you for your service. Let's pray together. First of all, God, we pause in gratitude before we begin this meeting. Thank you for all the gifts that we enjoy in this great community. This morning, we ask for your guidance and wisdom and support to help these leaders to engage in meaningful discussion as they make decisions that affect the lives of so many people. We pray for continued healing and mercy for those suffering from the COVID virus. Give strength to all our healthcare workers, first responders, and community servants. Bring recovery to those building back their lives after Hurricane Ida. Keep us in your care in both the highs and lows of life. And embolden us to be fair and just to all concerned. In your strong name, we pray. Amen.
Your prayers are powerful. Would you lead us in the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good to be here. It's good to be anywhere.
Well, thanks Pastor Dobbs spoke for all of us when we continue our prayers for Louisiana's recovery in Ida because we have all been there, done that, and know exactly how they feel. Thank you, Sheriff, for leading our recovery efforts to go over there. And our fire department, I think we have three people over there now for the next two weeks that'll be helping them out. I believe they're in Homa.
And a word for the people on Highway 26.
And Highway 26.
I'd like to tell you our former employee Shannon Bordelon, four of those people are her immediate family members, and they're still in ICU. So definitely a prayer for them, her niece and sister-in-law. Terrible.
And with that, remind me, all right, we have a public hearing to receive comments regarding Harrison County's proposed budget this school year 2021-2022. Are there any comments on the proposed budget? Hearing none, do we need a motion to approve?
A motion.
Second.
No, you're not approving.
We're just hearing, I'm sorry. Okay, number two, recognize Pastor Shanmair Jimmy Rafferty as he discusses potential project TIF bonds for. Mayor.
Thank you very much. I'd like to thank Marlin and the rest of the board for having us here today. We're really excited about this potential development in Pastor Shan. It's potentially a $57 million investment. And I'd like to introduce you to the developer. His name is Rob Stone. And then a person who's been helping us is Lawrence Lyons, former mayor of Dixburg and an expert on TIF financing, from what I understand, and he's just been educating me on this. And the Pastor Shan Board of Alderman has approved of this TIF financing in Pastor Shan, and we would like to get the Harrison County Board of Supervisors to do the same for us. Thank you.
Good morning, everyone. Before I talk about this pretty huge project, I wanted to also, as a courtesy of this board, I was here many years ago on a Hampton Inn project for Pastor Shan. And we've been working on it for seven years, believe it or not. I'm happy to let you know that we have a new developer developing that project. It's slightly smaller than what we presented to you, but the TIF plan's still in play. And just wanted, as a courtesy, to let you know that we hope to break ground on that project very soon. They've started advertising for construction, so that project finally will go forward. That's at scenic and market. So this project, we have a developer here will tell you a little bit about the project. It's a massive project for Pastor Shan. It's on the west side of the city where their comprehensive plan has 85 acres set up for this type of development. It's a $57 million project. It has about $8 million of infrastructure cost. It'll be phased out over about five years. They're looking at 835 construction jobs with an annual payroll of $20 million. There's about 200 permitted jobs with an annual payroll of about $5 million. The project, because of the location, has got a substantial amount of infrastructure work to get out of the velocity zone and out of the flood zones and all these things. So I wanted to let you know, unlike most of our TIF projects, this one has all of the infrastructure cost upfront. And even though the developer is phasing the project, the TIF bonds will not reimburse him until the very end of the project ultimately. So he's got all the incentive in the world to keep going with additional phases. The first phase is estimated right now about $15 million. WLX News article had mentioned at the very end that the city had already approved their TIF plan. They have not. We had an informal meeting, just like we're having right now this morning with you, to kind of get a nod from the boards that it's okay to proceed with the TIF documentation. And that's where we are with the city. We've drafted their documents, and it's with the bond attorney right now. And we're asking the county basically informally the same thing, to make sure you're on board. He needs to make a decision in the next 60 days of whether they're going to go forward or not. And this is the big contingency, the main contingency of whether they can afford to do this or not. But I'll hand this over to Rob Stone.
All right, good morning. Thank you. It's an interesting project. I've owned this property since 2007. And really, we purchased it because they put this in an area back then, under the smart code, that allowed quite a bit of development on that area. But the biggest drawback, and the reason we couldn't have done anything, is we've got to come up close to 18 feet to build a platform on which we can build on top of. And that's what we're trying to use this TIF financing for because without some help like that, we can't absorb the $6 million that it's going to cost to basically build the platform and develop it and still have this project viable to have it make sense. So we have basically some condominium units, seven condominium buildings overall, an 80-room hotel, and we have all kinds of parking available underneath, and we're just looking to hold self-contained development. So it should kick off an annual payroll of $5 million and create 200 to 300 permanent jobs. There'll probably be about 800 construction jobs as we get started. And we're anticipating trying to get started right after the first year.
There's going to be some commercial activity also. Generally, that's when we participate with commercial activity with TIF bonds, residential and mixed-use commercial.
That's the first place I lived when I first came to Coates, Market Street, but I get confused. So it is on the north side.
Not Market Street.
I thought you said something about Market.
No, I was saying the first, the TIF from a few years ago is at Market and Seating.
Oh, yeah.
This one is on the west end of town, near the bridge, the Bay St. Louis.
Okay, where Annie's?
Yes, so where, yes, where Annie's, Annie's was on the west side of Highway 90 as it comes down. But Annie's is on Bayview. If you go east along Bayview, it intersects Cedar Avenue.
That's near that intersection.
That's where we are, Bayview, railroad tracks, Cedar, and the water tower. It's a four.
Near Palms Damel.
It's actually right at the intersection of Cedar and Bayview. So right there.
So Henderson, Henderson.
Exactly.
But in Pastor Shan, in the city.
It abuts the railroad tracks on its southern boundary, and the Bayview's on its northern boundary, and Cedar is on its eastern boundary. And the western boundary is the city because we have a water tower at this right close by, and it's two blocks from the beach. So it has all of that. It's really a great opportunity for the city to finally get a chance to get a hold on trying to develop the western end of town. That's what's going to be a big.
Will the condos be luxury or affordable? Because we need housing desperately.
So they're affordable and will be more on the vacation rental type weekly rentals.
So not to live in and afford?
No, I mean, but.
Give me a range. 200 to 6?
What?
How much would each condo cost?
If I was going to buy one, what would it cost?
300, 350, in that, in that, in that range. They're only, you know, it's again, you have to be market rate with it.
Sure.
So they're average 1,100, 1,200 square feet.
For 300,000?
Yeah.
I'd just like, you know, to keep in mind that we really do have a big need for housing right now. And so people, perhaps you could consider doing some less expensive for people who are from here who could live there. If you could consider that, I would appreciate that.
There are a number of parcels that we're going to include in this TIF district for the later phases. And those, the conversation I've had with Charles and Rob were about sort of private owned residential development in those areas around this project. This is primarily a commercial development, the initial development, which is rental property, vacation, splash pads, things like that, restaurants, things of that nature.
Yeah, that's residential, commercial residential.
You'll notice when I submit the actual TIF plan, we come to present the actual plan, you're going to see a number of parcels. Those are the ones that are the outlined parcels are residential, intended right now for residential.
Are any of them timed?
I have the formal resolution of intent that was approved by our board, five to not, if I could present.
Was it approved or was?
I'm sorry.
The resolution of intent was approved by the board, saying that they are on board. They want to communicate to your board, the city, all five members have voted to proceed with this TIF plan. And so based on Mr. Ladner's advice, we just brought a resolution of intent, spread out your minutes, just so you understood that everybody was on board.
The city will go ahead and proceed, and so I don't have a problem making a motion to participate up to 50% as we normally do with the TIF, TIF bond to support this project. That's a motion.
Any more discussion? All those in favor signify by aye. All those opposed, motion carries. Mr. Holloman will give you that.
Thank you very much. We're wonderful.
It just says your hand.
Okay, Mr. Loftus, are you in the house? You probably don't have to tell us much based on what we all saw driving over. Give us an update on what Ida did to our beautiful beaches.
Okay, we're going to be talking, we're going to be talking about Zeta today, not.
Yeah, but I still want you to give us a quick.
Yes, ma'am, surely will. You want me to do that now?
Yeah, you don't mind.
Let me do Ida now. We started working last Tuesday during the debris. The contractor that the county has on board, they started on Thursday pushing up debris. We worked through the weekend. We're going to be opening up sections of the beach like we did after Cristobal. After we clean up an area, then we'll open up that section of beach. We did one section in Biloxi over the weekend from DeBee's Road to the Coliseum Pier. That part of the beach is open. They still have the debris piles by the seawall that the contractor will be coming later on this week, starting to haul that debris off. But we're working on it as quickly as we possibly can. The contractor's out there working also. So we're working our way to the east. We have our crews working on the west end of the county, trying to get some of that debris pushed up, so we're trying to take care of all of the county. But hopefully, the contractor thinks that they have everything done within three to four weeks' time.
Mr. Holloman, do we need to amend an earlier motion where the beaches were closed? Do we need to change that and say it'll be opened? Go ahead.
Probably need to rescind the emergency declaration. We haven't done that yet, so that needs to be done.
Okay, we need a motion to rescind the emergency.
Motion.
Do we now have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by aye. All those opposed, motion carries.
The beaches are closed, so the board wants to close portions of the beach during the cleanup. I think the board wants to do that.
Now, we made a motion to close the beaches. We did that.
That was part of the emergency declaration, so that's now been rescinded. So now if you want to close portions of the beaches for cleanup purposes, I think.
Well, what we'd like to do, I think, is allow Mr. Loftus to, give him the authority to open whatever parts or close whatever parts he needs to in order to get them cleaned.
I think that's.
That's what I was going to suggest.
Do we have a motion?
Motion.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries.
You need to give some notice to the public of which portions are closed or something else.
Please work with.
We do. I got with Cameron, and she puts out a public notice, and then the news media knows.
And then will you notify the vendors directly when they can?
Yes, ma'am, I surely will. Okay, on Hurricane Zeta, I know we had talked a few months back about some of our drainage outfalls that we had some severe damage to. We had the Jim Simpson Pier that was totally destroyed. And then we have some of the renourishment projects for the beach itself. We've had some discussions with FEMA, and they've gotten back with us. So I brought Max here, and Matt, we can discuss what FEMA has agreed to, what they haven't agreed to. Right now, on the Jim Simpson Pier, they have agreed to the mitigation of building back the pier with concrete pilings, metal structures instead of the wood structures like before, float-through decking, and lighting, and aluminum rails. So that project has, is going forward. Dax can give you a little bit more information, what we had on the drainage outfalls, where we stand on those.
Can we make Chuck before we move on? Jim Simpson Pier, mysterious. What is going to be our local cost on that mitigation, about 200,000? Do you have that, Matt?
Yes, sir. So for the county, we would be 12 and 1/2% of the total cost.
And that would equal about, total dollars, about what?
About 214,000 is what we have.
The board to realize that would not.
But it's going to be a lot better.
It's, oh, yeah, yeah. No, I'd say 100%. Doesn't make sense to be able to back in, and next year have another one.
Yeah, it's a little over $2 million project for the new pier, but it's only going to cost Harrison County about 200,000.
And what about the other?
It's worth it long-term, I can tell you that.
We haven't did any mitigation on the I-110 because we didn't really receive a whole lot of damage to that pier on the last time. It's just mainly decking, so we did not do anything on that pier.
Did the damages that we received, the additional damages on that cover include this and that?
On what?
The additional damage, because there were some additional damages.
I think that Ida tore a few more boards, at least from Jim Simpson Pier, but it was basically destroyed already.
Yeah. And I'll let you, Dax, talk to them about the.
And before we move on, give me an update on that wave outfall. I know we had a big issue with it, but I want the rest of the board to know.
Yeah, what had happened on that, on the, on that outfall, there is a, it's a box cover. And on top of the box cover, there is an inspection cover that you take off, but it's very huge. It's massive. We don't have any piece of equipment in our fleet that can even handle it. What had happened is over the year and a half it's been there, a lot of the sand from on the beach itself went into that box and jam-packed it full. The contractor that built that outfall, he was down in Biloxi doing some other work. We got him to come in there. He couldn't lift the top off either. He had to slide it off. We dug out the material, and it started flowing again. So we went to the engineers that built that and tried to tell them that we needed those boxes so we could open them up to do some maintenance on them. So they're going to change it from one huge box top to three individual ones, so we'll be able to take them off and do maintenance. But the way it is right now, we can't.
Which I think you predicted, you're in supervisor role early in time.
Yes, I was very concerned about that.
But you did get with, because I know Biloxi's looking at doing a couple more.
Yeah, they are. Coastal Environmental's doing the engineering, so they changing the design of that outfall box. Yes, ma'am.
Thanks, sir.
May I ask one other question?
Yes, ma'am.
Who pays for that? Who paid for the contractor?
It wasn't through the contractor that did it. He did it on his own.
Okay, good deal.
Yes, ma'am.
That's good to hear. Thank you.
Sure.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Marlin, on your cost question, and for the board in general, as I understand it, this Zeta round of FEMA's reimbursement. So, you know, we're going to finish the project, and then after everything's finished and information submitted, you get reimbursed. So there's certainly an upfront cost to these projects and a financing cost, I guess. So we're proud to be working with Chuck and Matt on the beach and the outfall structures that were damaged in Zeta. We're at a point where I believe the beach is going to get FEMA funding, and that's the top line on your, on your cost estimate there. We lost about 168,000 yards of material in Zeta, and FEMA will participate in placing that back. One, I will give Corps of Engineers credit. FEMA's gotten pretty particular about proving the damages, and so you need a survey. The Corps of Engineers happened to have done a survey of our beaches after Sally, Hurricane Sally, that really didn't affect us, but they had surveyed our beaches, and that served as a pre-storm survey for Zeta. And then the same group did a post-storm Zeta survey. And so those surveys are about $50,000 item on the Corps nickel, and they provided the information to us to, for us to use.
So can we use their post-storm survey for Ida's pre-storm survey?
We can, we can. And Chuck and I talked a little bit. Chuck can answer it probably better, but I think the general feel is we probably didn't lose a whole lot in Ida.
In Ida, not a whole lot.
And we lost all the fencing.
Yeah, the fencing, that was a core project. We lost all that.
How did the sand dunes do?
The dunes, 95% of them are still there.
But all the fencing pretty much is.
And the sea edge stay?
No, not really.
Shifted it around, I'm sure, but still, still on the beach. The next step for the beach, I'd like to try, well, in addition to the FEMA project, we need some sand, even if Zeta did not happen. We're short sand. And the beach is narrow, and as a general rule, we've got sand higher closer to the seawall, so we've got extra sand there, but overall, we're still short. And if we're going through the trouble of permitting and surveying and hiring a dredge contractor to come dredge, we really need to do some more yardage, so.
Well, Doc, let me ask you something. We're trying to get the sand not to blow on the beach.
Yes, sir.
Now, you telling us to bring more in there to blow on the beach. Why don't we just leave it alone, level it off at a lower level, and maybe, maybe we'll solve our problem with sand blowing on the beach? I mean, on the high, not on the highway.
So that's, that's what I want to look at for some potential hazard mitigation for the beach. So we've got hazard mitigation for outfalls, and we've got hazard mitigation approved for Jim Simpson Pier. I'd like to look at some alternative sections, templates for the beach, and see if we can't just, makes a lot of sense to lower it back like it was. But even with that, we still need to add width to our beach. We're still short.
There's certain sections, and Chuck can identify them, where we have a blowing sand problem. So if we're going to do it, pick one of those areas that we know we have a blowing sand problem and scoot it out there. Because I think what's going on now in Biloxi is they're experimenting in an area that we do not have a blowing sand problem. So let's pick an area that we know where the sand blows.
Success, however.
And it's worse where you have the lower seawall sections because it's generally worse there.
It's like the front of the malls, man. There's, Chuck knows where they are.
I do think, though, what you need to be careful about, the Corps of Engineers, if you let it get too low, they're going to start giving you a problem because they want sand there to protect the seawall.
Right.
And that's the problem, because we thought about lowering the profile of the sand, but then the Corps of Engineers got on us because they wanted the, the seawall was built to protect the highway, the sand beach was pumped in to protect the seawall.
You have to have railing to protect the hillside.
And if you go below a certain level, below the top of the seawall, you got to have the railings according to, of course, that's a problem.
Just look at those troubled areas.
Yes, ma'am.
Like they're about a Coliseum and it's like, to the opposite of I U.
Alan Rainey.
You're going to test something out. Don't worry.
Yeah, like Centennial Plaza, we just replenished it, and it's already corroded really bad.
And you've got hotspots. The worst is Centennial Plaza, Coffee Creek, as far as erosion. And then your second worst is Pitcher Point down Long Beach, and tends to.
Did the grass on the dunes help any?
Yeah, it did.
Did it help the dunes?
Sure did.
I think the dunes did very well in Ida.
Can I ask a question about, when they cleaned Coffee Creek and made it hold more water, did, does that cause more erosion on the beach?
I don't think so. Beach erosion is really, it's really a function of waves and wind that occur on the beach. I don't think the project that the Centennial affects it one way or the other. So we would like to combine the FEMA project with a county-funded project. And before we did that, we do a little more research on this template, on these hotspots, and to see if there's any other potential hazard mitigation things that, you know, if we can go to FEMA and show them a good idea for hazard mitigation, they'll fund that too. And they'll fund that up to double their participation in the base project. So that's, that's what we, that's what we'd like to do there.
Tell you can get us a cost on that? That's not included in your right.
Not, not right. That's correct. And so, so from the, from the FEMA process, we'd have to develop a good idea, and I'd like to, we've got a coastal firm that we've been working with on some projects, and I'd like to have them assist us a little bit to come up with some ideas. FEMA will, they'll participate in an analysis of those ideas. Because with coastal, you can, for example, if we just added a jetty or added some kind of a breakwater, a hard structure or something, you can solve a problem, but the, if you don't watch out, you can create another problem. It's kind of like taking medicine. There's, there's a side effect to it. So we want, we want to, if we solve anything, we want to make sure we don't cause any other problems before we do. It might not be worth doing. Wouldn't be worth doing. And then on the drainage outfalls, there's, you know, a couple of million dollars of drainage outfall repairs. Those were heavily damaged in Zeta. And typically what happens is timber, timber piling and timber structures have been used to, at the ends of the outfall pipe to anchor. And we're, we've got a hazard mitigation concept to where we'll make those concrete. And still kind of working through the design details, but the concrete piling weren't great for piers and that sort of thing, so I think they'll work great for anchor structures. And then we'll figure out a way to not have any timber there. And so the timber is good as long as it lasts, but 15 or 20 years, it weathers, it rots a little, and it falls apart and lets the pipes have trouble. So I think we'll get a much longer life there, so I think we're well on our way to FEMA hazard, hazard mitigation project.
And they'll pay for that also. So we already know that Jim Simpson Pier is already done. The beach renourishment is done to a certain degree, and then we're working on the drainage outfalls with FEMA, with Matt's help. He's talking with them also. Right?
FEMA is generally receptive to the mitigation measures. Yes, it costs a little more, but it saves in damage in the future, and so it's worth the extra cost.
I don't know how familiar you are with FEMA, Matt, but if I were you, I'd save about 10 copies of everything I sell.
Yes, sir.
Because they don't keep coming back, want the same copy again and again.
So we'll be back with you soon as we hear any.
You're taking an army with you.
Trouble, look at the troubled blowing sand area.
Yes, ma'am.
Maybe start with one of those. Can, can we pay for that with bond money? Tim?
You could, if the board decides to do it. Tell them the beach.
Yeah, I just wanted to look at one of those little troubled areas with the blowing sand and kind of see what it would cost to lower that profile.
Okay. We tried that at one time where you were pulling the sand back away from the seawall.
We did.
Yeah, Marlin told us.
That didn't help.
Also what you put out, yeah.
Yeah, we can only go down so far.
I'm just curious, how come they can't put the sand back on?
Yeah, and Doc, you know, a lot of it has too much raw material in it, and they don't want to put it back out. We can't put it back out with the EQ.
You got a lot of oil dripping from those cars that stays out there, and it gets polluted.
Chuck, those two, but on the two troubled spots, do we have high dunes with sea on those two troubled spots?
No, we don't have any. The chair, because it's a high use area, it's too much.
We'll just have to do it when the tourists leave and rope it off somehow, because we've got to do something. It's dangerous. People go to turn, and it's just dangerous.
Can't, can't we make paths? Can we put the sand dunes and make paths? That's what they do in Florida.
That's beautiful.
And it's, it's something nice to look at, and it's.
Yeah, we've done that down in Biloxi on the other side of Rodenburg, but we could do the same thing in those areas, I'm sure we could.
And there's plenty of space for our tourists to go. If we have two troubled spots, let's cure that, do a walkway, like she said, let people enjoy around it. I mean, that's silly not to.
Sure.
In my mind. Sea oats, you can't even order right now, by the way. They're out.
Yeah.
So whoever can grow sea oats, Chase, your dad, you can do it.
We used to have three, uh, we did it with a grant, we had three hot houses in District Two.
Really?
And we grew our own sea oats.
Well, I'm gonna ask the extension service about it.
Thank you. We love to have.
Okay, is there anything else?
Thank you. Thank you so much, appreciate it.
Thank you so much.
If you go down the areas of Orange Beach where there's dunes, those big dunes, you don't see any sand on them, see close.
Okay, let's go to item four. Order approving the coastal Mississippi budget for fiscal year 2021, 2022 presented by Milton Segarra. Do we have a motion? Do we have a second?
Second discussion.
Discussion, Mr. Segarra, that's what I was getting at. Mr. Segarra, would you come up and give us your budget report, please? Thank you. And Ms. Brooke, state your name and address for the record.
Name, Brooke Schultz. Address, 365 Lakeview Boulevard, going to Mississippi.
Thank you, Mr. Segarra, state your name and address for the record.
Thank you so much, Milton Segarra, 296 Bullworth Road, Suite 100, 158 Biloxi.
Thank you. And I just wanted to take a moment to thank y'all for allowing us to come present our budget to you.
Thank you.
Thank you for sending me the advance.
You're welcome.
Come on, thank you.
This is the marketing plan, but he hasn't sent.
Well, thank you very much, Board, Madam President. Thank you so much for the opportunity. Before we go into, we have this particular presentation, we have two sections. One is the business part of it and the second one is the budget. I've been told to go directly to the budget and we'll do it again. I just want to.
What did you end this at long?
Absolutely, of course. I just want to be very brief, the budget that you have, it's, it's very important. It's, it's a very important part of the recovery we've been seeing. And I, I have to take two minutes to take you through some of the instances that we went through that helped us to develop this budget and we assigned the specific dollars amount. So the first one is, as you know, we, we put the new brand of Coast to Mississippi in 2018. In 2019, we had immediately the water situation, water intrusion, we came back really strong. After that, we have few weather-related threats, including one hurricane. Then we have COVID. With COVID, we thought, and obviously it was a trend in the industry, to lose most of our revenue from the, from the tourism occupancy tax. But thanks to the hard work of the team that I have here with me, I would like to recognize Pam Tomasowski, our Director of Finance, Karen Connor, our Director of Marketing, Jess Payne, our Director of Communication, Zach Holyfield, and as well some other Board of Members that we have here, Keem and Rusty and Bill and Richard, and obviously our President. We immediately went to, went to work and we were able to create, in conjunction with the rest of the DMOs here in Mississippi, the Tourism Recovery Fund. And that Tourism Recovery Fund helped us to get 3.4 million dollars to be invested. At the end of the year 2020, not only Mississippi was leading the nation in their recovery, but Coast to Mississippi was one of the top performing destinations in the nation. Uh, and we were able to recuperate faster. And with that, we also reached out to other specific monies available like EDA. And you will see 1 million dollar, just, can I take this?
Sure.
Thank you. You will see 1 million dollars of EDA money, which is going to be used this particular year. So you have one budget, which is specifically related with the source of occupancy tax room, which is the 5.214. And you have additional lines of 1,700,000 and potentially 1.2. But right now, we're gonna focus on the room tax and the 1 million dollars that we have from EDA. That is the combined budget for this fiscal year 22. 64% of all the revenue of that 5,2214 is for marketing, 64%. That's remarkable. 29% is for payable and payable-related expenses, which is within the industry average and very low to what normal DMOs use in the nation, and 7% in administrative costs. So it's a good balanced budget. You'll see in this budget things like more support to the fly markets, developing new markets in Huntsville and Nashville. You'll see more effort on groups and conventions. You'll see more efforts on other areas that we have decided, for example, the board decided to split the marketing committee into marketing and sales. That's gonna help us tremendously to push forward the groups incentive that we need to do. And also you'll see a new incentive for the local tour operators, which is gonna be to support development of group business. We're gonna help by providing an incentive to the cost of those tickets that they sell to generate new group business for the coast. So different things that we're doing that we believe will pay up and will have a more revenue and visitors to the coast. In 2017, we had 13.5 million visitors. In 2019, we had 14.2, an increase of 6%. Since 2018, we have grown our room inventory from about 5, 6% right now, almost to 15,700 rooms. So all indicators are in the right direction and this budget is gonna help us to continue moving that, that direction. And I'm here to answer any question that you may have.
Does the board have any questions?
Salaries and payroll, I'm just looking at this sheet right here.
Yes, ma'am.
There's an increase, tell me what that increase is and why?
We went to 16, 16.5 full-time employees.
16.5.
16.6 is 16 full-time equivalent and one person that is part-time.
We will be going, we haven't hired all of its positions yet.
Exactly.
How many do you currently have?
Twelve. The money from MDA, EDA and MDEQ, is that one-time money?
Yes, ma'am.
So have you included that in your operating budget?
It will be. What we do is, once we have the, the plan, it will be presented to the board through the marketing committee. And the specific actions will be then earmarked by line depending on the action.
Which is actually a question I have for the Board of Supervisors. Our current budget is 5.2 million dollars of expenses and the legislation that created this says that you all must approve all expenditures. If we amend our budget throughout the year, like EDA is a reimbursement grant to us, we spent the money, it is in this budget, but then when we get back, we have to then reallocate and rebudget. Do we need to come back and get any amendments approved by the board?
Ms. Tallman?
I think you do.
I think we do too, but I, I want your opinion.
The statute says, yes, the statute says it must be approved or any amendments must be approved also.
Before any expenditure is made.
All of our other departments, if they change.
Yeah, and I just wanted clarification here, that's how I read it.
One caveat there, within the budget that's approved, I think the law is pretty clear that within the budget that is approved, you have discretion to.
Yeah, but I'm gonna say if we go over 5.2 million.
Mine, Ivan, transfer would not require you, is what you're saying, come back, but any amendment to the budget would.
If you amend the budget, increase it and or decrease it, I think that requires the board to.
But at this time, we know for a fact that it's gonna be 1 million dollars that we're allocating, so it's, it's certain to say that is the 5.214 plus that 1 million that we will use in this particular, in this particular.
This budget's being approved at 5.214.
So anything over 5.214, we'll come back, which is not a problem.
You need to amend the budget for additional revenue, you're not gonna have any objections from the board.
Will do, sir.
Well, yeah, and there's just the uncertainty of COVID, room tax revenue, I mean, you just don't know.
Yeah, those are, for example, the EDA, immediately after COVID, you know, we had a few options like from the CARES Act and from the American Rescue Plan. And we are actively seeking for additional revenue, the same way we did with TRF, Tourism Recovery Fund Part One, there is an effort to try to reauthorize that particular law in the upcoming session and, and get our fair share, which is based on a formula that it's use the total size of your budget and the percentage of the visitors coming to the state of Mississippi, your, your market share. And obviously, we're leading that particular area as well.
Does this budget reflect any pay raises?
My, my words exactly.
What, what are the raises? Tell me what pay raises are.
The budget has two, I'm sorry.
In what positions?
There is a 4%, there is a 4% across the board for pay raises based on, on performance to their list and also include my specific raise as per my contract.
What'd you say?
My specific CEO raise.
Which is how much?
4%.
So if the 4% is, everybody gets it or only certain people?
It will be based on the, it has, but it has been budgeted 4%, but then it will be the process of evaluation by each director to the ones that, that will comply and will get that 4%. People that is new will not get a 4% increase.
I remember specifically, Milton, standing over there, you said because of COVID and having to lay off eight people, very, you know, much lower paid than you at almost a quarter of a million dollars, that you would not take a raise because of COVID, but I see you have.
Yes, that was last year. That was last year, yes. And I didn't. My contract was approved, I believe, in February or March, and I deferred that specific until October, but it was not taken.
But you still took it?
In October, with the new fiscal, yes.
But we're still ante COVID, you understand?
Yes, ma'am. But what I can tell you is that, if you take a look, we still 29% of the, of the payroll, there has been no, no increase whatsoever on that. And number two, the financial condition of the organization is in good shape, that can provide for my and the other 4% without making any specific damage to the operation of the company.
Those increases, the 4% are based on performance for everybody?
Yes, sir. Mine is a contract, mine is in my contract.
Yeah, who, who determines the performance? How, how they, who ultimately determines the performance of each employee that's gonna receive the 4%?
For example.
I assume the board will do yours. I assume the board will.
No, it's contractual, it's contractual, this is not performance-based.
But there is a series of performance metrics in my contract, sir.
So you will make, you'll make the decision, of course, Milton, on the performance of the other employees as to whether they give.
Managers, managers will be evaluated by our directors, I will evaluate the directors. That's the, the process, sir.
But now this 25% of your salaries and payroll does not include your sales commissions, correct?
In the payroll cost, there is a line that includes any particular bonuses.
But you're saying your salaries and payroll will make up 29% of your entire budget. Does that include your commission?
Yeah, the 1.5 at the bottom, Madam President, is the 29%.
Does that include?
Yes, ma'am.
Just to clarify, in the contract, in your contract, it's automatic?
Yes, sir.
Without any performance criteria?
Correct. Oh, yeah. The, the, one other issue, the, the one-time money, is that included in your budget and in budgeting any of your salaries? Because that's one-time money. So if you have.
No, it's a summer reason.
Which one, one-time money? Uh, one-time, EDA, MDEQ, TRF two. I don't believe so.
I don't, I, I can't believe it, and I hope not, that anybody would include in salary increases of one-time monies.
Yeah, that's, that's.
I hope.
Sir.
That's my question. We are not, there's a lot of things that go on.
Can cover the next year.
Ask questions.
No, sir. The, the specific payroll line that you have with you, it's to be covered by the room tax projection. The, the 1 million dollars or some of the other provide as part of the grants, you could, you could include in, in payroll. But we have opted, for example, with TRF, we only, of the 3.4 million dollars, we only use 1.4% in, in salaries, which is 56,000 dollars.
So are you saying that some, some of the grants would allow you to include salary
monies from those grants, salary increases?
And how do you?
No, no.
Okay, I thought that's what he said.
What they allow, I can, I think I can explain it better. What they allow, we have our salary expense, the TRF allows a certain amount of work performed by the staff to be reimbursed in that grant. And what we could have done was much more, we only used of the 3.4 million, 56,000.
So that amount could be decreased. I mean, you can't plan in multiple years ahead because the grant is not gonna be granted in multiple years ahead, it's a one-time grant.
The salary is covered by the room tax revenue, we were just allowed to allocate a portion of it to TRF.
They're just getting credit on the grant for part of the salary.
Right, but we, we were gonna cover it through.
You, you get a little cut on your, on your room tax grant, on your room tax.
And there's some uncertainty right now with the room tax. We had a meeting in April with the Department of Revenue and it has increased since then pretty dramatically. And I think Harrison County would have seen the other side of that since we split it. We don't know if that is, I would say a one-time, but a three-month correction or if it is a, hey, we are fixing this for good. So we don't know going forward if we're gonna continue to see those increases.
You can use it to save one year or possibly two, but at some point, you're gonna have to make that salary back up with the, with the room tax money.
Well, this one is.
Once it's been, it's not gonna keep coming, you're gonna have to up, if you adjust your room tax, because you can take grant money to pay a portion of that person's salary, at some point in the future, you're gonna have to make that difference up again with your room tax.
The salaries are 100% covered by the room tax.
You just got credit on a grant.
Right.
If, if we opt to do it that way, it's not.
We don't have to.
It's not automatically.
Kind of like Diarist, I can say I'm using my house, 25% of my house for my office, so I get credit for it.
But you're still gonna pay for your house.
Right.
I got a question on the marketing side. You have a committee, I'm assuming you have a committee that oversees your marketing?
Yes, sir.
In terms of radio and videos?
Yes.
They have any input on the diversity end of it?
Oh, absolutely. Diversity, equity and inclusion has been a, a topic in which we've been discussing for the last six months or so.
Could I see some videos, it's not, it's not, it's not as diversified. Yeah, I see some video that's not as diversified as we are on the coast, that kind of concerns me.
Absolutely. And, and Mr. Marsh has been leading that conversation in our board. As a result, we should be presenting this month a complete guideline to the board in terms of diversity, equity and inclusion for all the marketing and any messaging that the organization will start doing from now on.
Good. And also from the radio standpoint, I want to make sure that all radios across our formats are being equally invested. Does that, do you have someone that's overseeing that as well?
Well, that's, normally we advertise locally, but it's in the instance that perhaps you're making reference when we do, certainly we will include as much as possible all the, the, the local radio stations.
And I think what he's referring to, and let's just speak candidly, you know, Richard Marsh, our commissioner, specifically asked over and over and over and over to support local black station, to put African Americans and people of all color in all of our commercials. Rick Daniels, our JCD station, got a pittance compared to what a Ricky Matthews station got. That's just one example. And we are aware of this and our commissioner has, it's not okay. Richard, would you like to chime in that you did specifically ask for this over and over and it never quite happened?
Well, it all started back on September of last year when we were going over, I'm fine around, we, we went us, went over the marketing committee and everything. And I noticed that there was, there was a difference. And when I made it aware to him, to the staff, nothing ever materialized. Me ain't candid, let's be candid.
Yeah, it's the only way we should be.
And here again, we've been going back and forth, back and forth.
And it makes no sense to me why we have to go back and forth, back and forth, it gets, that's asinine to me.
Right, because the commission is your boss and that's what we need to say here today. It needs to be clear. If they say something, it needs to be done.
It's very clear. I mean, and we get, don't forget.
Well, it wasn't in the last three commercials that I saw, so it had.
And, and, and I'm thinking, I think you'll get a good bit of money, you gotta get a bit of money from the advertising for marketing. And if I'm not mistaken, even, there's some portions within the care of that for tourism. So there's, there's going to be ample amount of money available. I just, my thing is make sure that it's been, it's been, been handled fairly across the board. That's my only concern. And I don't know if it has been up to this point, but for the better sake of discussion, let's just make sure going forward that we are all inclusive. Because it's all taxpayers' money at the end of the day.
Absolutely, sir.
I'm somewhat curious, what portion of the marketing budget is local?
Nothing. Except if there is a specific like the TRF.
Radio station, what, what, I, I, maybe I'm confused, help me out a little bit. I thought we just got to discussing appropriation of money for, uh, advertising on local radio stations.
And W O X, right?
And W O X.
Yeah, they got a big job.
What portion of your budget is, goes to that?
That was from TRF.
Yes.
Normally our regular operating budget, we are trying to bring people into the coast. That was kind of a brand awareness campaign for local people during COVID to brain relatives to bring people in.
My question would be, my question would be, if you're going to market the Gulf Coast, you don't need to market it to me.
Exactly.
And to the people living here, go somewhere else where we can get people coming in.
That's what we do, sir.
That's what I wanted, uh, uh, somewhat confused, because I want that clarified.
Yeah.
So this was there in the marketing phase that you, uh, rebranding that you want the locals to participate in, et cetera, et cetera.
In this particular instance that Mr. Jones is mentioning, that was a one-time allocation allowed by the Tourism Recovery Fund to educate the local people on the needs of visit responsibly, responsibly, and also on the COVID-nineteen. And that was the specific qualifying portion that allows us to use the money, which was approved by our board to invest in our local market.
How much do you spend on, for example, educating the people who are service oriented toward tourism, the hotel workers, the restaurant workers and all that? How, how much do we educate, if that's the word we can use, about how you treat people and tourism and making them welcome and so that they'll come back, you have recitivism of those people coming back?
And getting them.
How much, how much is that?
I will tell you right away, uh, it's called.
Familiar with the attractions that we have, because a lot of these front desk people have no idea.
Yes. What we're doing right now is.
No idea.
Yeah.
With the Tourism Recovery Fund money, we were able to establish a, a more improved program. It's called Coastal Champions, which is, um, um, online version training in which through a, um, vendor, we access, um, how many thousands of licenses we have, like twelve hundred?
It's up to two thousand.
Two thousand, um, licenses and we are actively reaching to the front office and, and, and people that are in contact with our clients. And they will log in and they will complete this particular course in two hours. And once they finish, they have a certification on specific things on coastal Mississippi. So that's one of the programs that we're going to be increasing the, the effectiveness and we're putting budget, which is like, um, I don't know if I'm mistaken, total budget for the, for that particular program?
Coastal Champions is thirty-eight five, but we also have our attractions portal that we're investing another thirteen thousand yet.
And what will it do?
Would you be able to explain the program?
It, it's a, um, online purchasing system for attractions. Consumers can go on, on our website, they can purchase an attractions pass of one day, two day or three day. They can also purchase the attractions passes as an individual. We've got that right now, we do a fun and free pass also one day, two day, three day. We're doing show your badge program for convention and meeting attendees. They'll be offered discounts, exclusive discounts and offers to restaurants and attractions as well.
So can they book a hotel room?
On our website they can, yes, ma'am.
I want to circle back just a little bit on, on, on the advertising. We, we, I, I'm sure we understand that even though we may not be targeting local affiliates, most of the radio stations are nationally, have national audience as well. So when you, when you advertise with the local station, it's hitting national because it's through some type of satellite or it, clear channels, radio stations all over. So I don't think we need to just rule out our local station because they have national audience.
Sure, in, in our media plan, radio is, is not part of the options that we normally do. We use more digital placement than, than radio and TV. But certainly we will consider, um, other options as well.
And I think common sense would dictate if you're going to do that, if you're going to advertise radio stations, et cetera, et cetera, you need to look at the audience they lead, the numbers.
Absolutely.
For example, if I, my radio station reaches a few people, you're not going to invest the equal amount in my radio station as you would somebody reaching fifty percent of the, you know. So you're going to make a determination based on the amount of audience that are reached, I presume?
We have considered Pandora, Spotify and some of those specific mediums, um, as part of the budget.
And I, and I'm certain, and I questioned the integrity of the commission for us, doing the job. Obviously, you know what you're doing. Just, I just have some questions, I just want to bring, bring them to you.
And I'm here to answer those, sir. But when we do any type of commercial, sir, and for the overall commission knowledge, um, our agencies, professional agencies, they bring all the recommendations. Um, all the ads are presented to, to the staff, to the organization, to the board before they go air or, or go to the, to the media plan. Um, and we're taking this very specific request about diversity, equity and inclusion, which we started last year with changing a little bit in the governance model and making some changes to that part of our employee manual and bylaws. And, uh, but certainly I believe, and the staff as well, that we're going to be much more stronger and better organization when we fully implement this new approach, which will include the input not only from the staff and the board, but as well the agencies that we're working with, and they are worldwide agencies as well.
So I have one more question.
Yes, sir.
You said that one point five million for your salaries is customary and within normal bounds. You have a five million dollar budget total. I want the public to understand that customary, normal bounds would be a ten to twenty million dollar budget, right? A Miami, let's just say. That would be customary, but not for a five million dollar budget with all due respect. Your salary alone is what somebody would make in a Miami, not in a South Mississippi. And when our sheriff's department guys make thirty thousand, it is hard to swallow. I think you understand.
Or twenty-five.
Or twenty-five thousand, risking their lives every day. And you still took a raise that really, I know Dr. Leonard and I, that really bothered us. That you still took that massive raise, two hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars to do this job with an excellent staff. And you still took that raise, that really bothers me.
Point there, let me tell you, um, first is that the average in the industry for payroll is fifteen to thirty percent. We're twenty-nine. Let me take some.
We're South Mississippi, we're small, we're very small when it comes to.
That's, that's the average, that's the average. Here in, in South Mississippi, hospitals forty-five percent.
What is?
Hospitals forty-five percent. Service industry only up to, even up to fifty percent. DMOs across the nation, across the nation, is sometimes forty-five, even fifty percent. We're doing this for twenty-nine percent and we're able to do it within the budget. So twenty-nine percent is within, and this is specifically the range I was mentioning, commissioner, powers, supervisor powers, fifteen to thirty percent, and we're there.
But you still took your raise when you told us you would not.
You have said that many times, I already agree on that.
Okay. But you have no excuse, you have no, I'll go back or I shouldn't have, or I won't take it this time, or.
I think.
I just want that to get clear.
It's clear.
And that you, your salary is the top twenty-five in the United States, right?
If you say so. I don't know, it's the top twenty-five, I, I don't know that, ma'am.
Compared to.
Big markets.
Compared to, you're being paid in the little market for a big market job. But anyway, all right, that's all I have.
Okay, is any more questions? With that, we have a motion and a second to approve the coastal Mississippi budget for fiscal year twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two as presented by Mr. Segarra. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries.
Thank you very much, board.
Okay, let's go to, uh, number five. We're rocking and rolling today. Craig and I, Craig Hi with Neil Shaker, to give an update on the proposed HERSK landscape ordinance. I gave you on a table. Okay, Mr. Hi.
Good morning.
Good morning.
My name's Craig Hi. Uh, my address is, uh, seven eighty-six Howard Avenue, Biloxi, Mississippi. I'm here today to talk to you about the landscape ordinance. Uh, we were hired to do this several months ago to look at the provisions, do some revisions to the landscape ordinance. And I'm going to start off by just kind of talking about what's the purpose, purpose and intent of an ordinance? And the purpose of the, the ordinance is to place and maintain public safety, health, morals and general welfare of the community that those ordinances are passed. So y'all do a lot of different ordinances, but we're going to talk about landscaping today. Um, the benefits of a new, uh, development and having quality landscaping, there's a lot of things that go along with that. It, it helps air quality, um, it also helps from keeping heat islands. Basically, you know, you keep places, if you have a lot of asphalt, there's a lot more heat. Y'all notice that, uh, when you get out here and park in a parking lot that has no tree cover. Uh, restoration of, of contaminated property or so forth, um, landscaping helps with that. Uh, one thing, healthy, it makes healthy neighborhoods. I mean, people want to get out and walk around in a landscaped neighborhood. I mean, they don't, that, so it encourages people to get outside. Stormwater management, there's low, low crime rate in areas that have more landscaping. Um, air pollution, noise. Uh, and then one of the things that I want to talk about is how it makes customers feel more, uh, appealing to their environment as far as, uh, when it comes to, uh, how, how do we take strong landscape requirement benefits like tourism, property values and the perception of the community? Those are the things that we've really got to work on, guys. I mean, we need to, when you go to places that are tourism type communities, what do you notice about their? Y'all, y'all have been there, you go to Gulf shores, you go to different places. And when you, the entryways, their, their intersections, the way they are and the way their landscape makes a difference. Um, so one of the things that is, is kind of proven is that nine to twelve percent is spent more in a landscaped area, okay? A shopper spends nine to ten, or twelve percent more in a area that is, you know, cleaned up and it has nice landscaping. All right.
I hate to interject, but also, uh, just the gentleman, one of the gentlemen's, the developer that was here earlier from Past Christian, that was the mayor of Vicksburg. Um, I was talking to him and I said, why are you moving to Ocean Springs instead of Harrison County? And he said, because I don't feel safe. Once I get to a certain area, I don't, there's not enough areas here that makes me feel safe. And I think that's very important and you did touch on that.
Yeah, well, I'm, I'm, you're correct. And that's, that's the next thing is like, here's an example, now, I'm not picking on Dollar General, but.
Please do.
The, the point, the point is, is that we have a lot of different Dollar Generals throughout the United States and they're all built differently. So you can go to Panama City, it looks more like the one they just built in Ocean Springs, okay? And, and it's all about your ordinance, it's about how you make people build and the way you make them landscape or whatever they do, so.
Which one is which, I'm sorry?
Okay, this, this one right up here is the one they just built. This one they built in Ocean Springs.
This one is one of ours.
All right, this one is on Highway forty-nine. Um, this is, this is the one on Canal Road. Um, and then this is just the, this is the one on Canal Road too. I mean, they have some landscaping, but it's.
So the one in Ocean Springs even has smaller signage.
Correct.
Mm-hmm.
Correct, and those, and those are all things that are controlled by your ordinances, okay? I'm not here to talk about that part, but that's, that's, that is, that is.
It looks better.
Right, but that's, that's what you got to realize, that ordinances affect change, um, in the way things look. But, um, so property values, um, a well landscaped home can add approximately six to twelve percent more. So in a neighborhood that's well landscaped, has a nice entrance, people get more money for them. And that, that's, that's proven, I mean, that's, uh, so those are the kind of things that we, we want to try to do. Um, the perception of a community, all right, that, that's the biggest thing. So and I, and I, here's a picture of example, right outside my office. Uh, that's where Biloxi has gone in, a piece of property that was vacant right there at the corner of, I mean, they put a park there basically. Now people go there now and counter gate, the whole neighborhood has changed just because of that one green space that people can go, they play music on Sunday, people just come out there and bring their guitar and people meet. So the, the point is creating that sense of space is important and it changes a negative perception of the area. And we've got to keep working on that. Um, and it just, I think that's something that lighting is another thing that goes along with that. Um, but that's, it's a, I mean, we can see that working in downtown Biloxi, for example, here, so. Uh, all right, one of the things that your ordinance currently doesn't have is a purpose and intent, okay? So the purpose and intent is something that we felt like needed to be put into the ordinance. Uh, the purpose of these, or I'm just going to read it to you, the purpose of these standards is to protect, maintain and enhance the enema and long-range health, safety and economic stability, welfare, general welfare of the present and future citizens of Harrison County. And I think that's, you know, that's what we do with ordinances. Uh, and then these orders are, these standards are enacted to provide for the enhancement, preservation and the replacement of trees, vegetation, landscaping as a part of the land development and building construction. Now, one of the things that's not in your ordinance now is preservation of trees. So if somebody wants to come clear cut trees, um, and they, they cut a bunch of trees down and don't really need to, now, you know, then one of the disadvantages of that is that right here at the bottom, this is just a little tidbit. For a one-inch trunk, okay? It, it basically, if it's one inch in diameter, it'll, it'll soak up about ten gallons per day. So if you've got a twelve-inch tree, it's a hundred and twenty gallons per day that a tree will soak up. So these big live oak trees, why is, why is the grass dead around them?
They're sucking up water.
They're sucking up water. They're sucking up water. So the point is, is that trees and keeping trees is important. Um, so one of the things we're going to try to do in this ordinance is if you put a tree, if you save a tree in your development, you know, you're going to get some credit for that, not having to plant, uh, more trees. Um, one of the, all right, the goal of this new ordinance was to make more user-friendly. Um, and also offer alternatives other than just plant trees every fifty feet just because you've got three hundred foot of frontage and it's kind of pasture land, why do you got to plant trees that you can't water?
And trees.
I mean.
And, uh, crate myrtles are not trees.
They're not?
They're a bush.
But, but, right, but, but one of the things is, you know, one of, is helping small development versus large development and creating a landscaping plan that makes sense, you know, for what, what's being built. One of the things that's not in the ordinance is also talking about applying property owners and leases. For example, if a leasing is changing hands and the land, there's no landscaping in front of a building, then you could, there, those leases could have to provide, when there's a change of use, they would have to provide landscape. Then we just offered different maintenance, uh, suggestions. We've also put together a book that's kind of just talked about maintenance, but that won't be part of the ordinance, but it's something that you can hand out to somebody and say, all right, here's how to maintain a tree. Now, one thing down here at the bottom, that's another thing, is we, we're putting things in here, like it shows how to plant a tree and how, how much space you need for the root ball and that kind of thing. So these kind of, you know, and the size of the tree. Some of these diagrams will help with, with that. All right, so as far as the ordinance, um, right now you have like basically nine sections, we're basically going to twelve. Um, and I just.
Can you turn that just a little bit? Thank you.
Thank you.
So we, we basically, we have nine sections, we're going to twelve sections.
This is your suggested, this is what we have now?
Yeah, this is, this is what you have now.
And this is what you would suggest if we did a new.
Okay, so, so there's, it's really, there's not much changing from the standpoint of, a lot of it's just staying the same. There's, there's not a lot of, you know, but these are the things that we're adding, that are in red. Purpose and intent, activity of landscape standards, general landscape standards, tree preservation credits and building foundation and, uh, transition zones, like from this, from the, how, you know, you may want to landscape in one area around the building more than at the highway, depending on its context. I mean, where is it where you're doing it? And I, I've got some pictures also. But one thing we did too is we separated single. But, one thing we did too is we separated single-family, multifamily. The way you lands, right now, your ordinance kinda, all that comes together. Well, there's different things you need to do for single-family versus multifamily as far as landscape. And then we tried to add more user-friendly things like diagrams that show what your setbacks and stuff like that need to be. All right, I went and took some pictures of some, just, this is at DeIvile High School. But they did a pretty good job of planting trees, but one of the things that, you know, they've got them spread around, they're not real close to the power lines, but they're in front of the, you know, the school. They've tried, and one of the things, though, is usually, they're, I mean, the question's where they're maintained now. And, and that's one thing that makes it hard. But one of the things that, this right up here is a tree that meets your ordinance. It's a two-caliper, that means it's, you know, two-inch round. That's the size tree you're supposed to be planting. So, these trees, I, you know, they're just at that size. Now, how long's the school been out there? Yeah, well, here's an example. This is over on Canal Road. But this is what somebody's planting with no irrigation. I mean, how are you gonna keep a tree alive? I mean, we're pointing, this is no, this is not close to being what the ordinance requires, okay? I mean, this tree right here is what the ordinance requires. So, I'm giving...
I'm sorry, you're saying on the left, there's a tiny tree, I just can't see it?
Yeah, it's right here.
It's on your back.
Oh, the Charlie Brown tree, I see.
So, the point, I mean, for example, all of this was suited, okay? I mean, it's just an example of, you gotta, they gotta try a little better. So, and here's an example of how somebody tried, they landscaped around the building and tried to do some things. I mean, there is a lot of asphalt there, but, I mean, at least they've got some plants, I mean, around it. All right, here's an exa, this is the example I was talking about. This is the Dollar General in Ocean Springs, and this is, this is what, on Canal Road, where they still, they still haven't really established any grass out there.
That's the Dollar General?
No, no, this is, no, this is the Chevron station there at the corner of Canal and Robinson Road.
You're just showing the difference of when you have green grass and when you don't?
Yeah, exactly, yeah, I mean...
And you can see the water right there in the gravel, there's so much water, cause there's nothing to soak it up, right?
Right.
Or no?
Yeah.
I mean, we're trying to understand...
No, that's exactly, I mean, I'm just giving these as examples of things that are going on.
How things look.
Yeah, how things look. I mean, that perception versus this perception.
And we're a tourist area, we just got through talking about how...
All right, one of the other things is highway. What do we do at interchanges, and what do we do? They did a really good job at St. Patrick's of planting these trees. Now, St. Patrick's has been there a while. Now, look at the size of these trees versus some of the other ones that were at DeIvile. I mean, and they've been there about the same time. So, they planted a little bigger tree, and they've grown, gave them space to grow, too, is another thing. But, we also need to be talking about what we need to do with our interchanges as well, but that's a different discussion.
And where's the thing on the left from?
This?
No, the one on the left.
This, I think that's up in Jackson, somewhere.
That's pretty, that's something we should shoot for in our interchanges, right? So you can see over...
Except it's cogon grass.
It's what?
Gogon grass.
No, it's not. Very funny fact.
It's not, it's a...
I'm just trying to understand, cause I think that is pretty on the left.
Right, well, those are the things that, you know, we...
It's pompous grass.
We need to decide how we're gonna proceed.
Which everyone...
But here's another example of just street trees, six oh four. All right, this is another, this screen, I mean, this is a good example, it doesn't have the firing range. I mean, how, I mean, you really don't even see the firing range, I mean, like...
You're welcome.
I'm just, right, but I mean, you don't, you go down the road, you don't even hear it, so... So, that, I mean, but, thank you if you didn't have it, though.
Well, it also offers some of the sound.
It does, but, but the point is, it's a good example of things that we need to continue to do. All right, that's all I've got, so if y'all got any questions?
Yeah, a couple things, Greg, of course. Any, any aesthetics always improves an area, we know that. One of the things you gotta be careful about is you don't overburden, you know...
I agree.
Especially, and, and when you talk about multi-family as opposed to single-family, what are we requiring of single-family? If I go out there in the county, and the ordinance I would assume would apply to me as a single family?
You're talking about five-acre lot or something?
Yeah. What, what requirements are we imposing on somebody that wants to build a house now?
All right, well, see, that's, now that goes back to, let me say this, though. Where it goes back to, Marlon, is tree preservation, which you're not doing now. So, if those, if you're gonna go out there and cut five acres, okay? And you're gonna go out there and just cut all the trees down, well, maybe that's not, I mean...
I, I can see preservation, but I'm reluctant to impose conditions on private, uh, single-family...
But I think that's the difference, but I think right now is what's happened is, though, well, most, most people are having to put in a tree, they put at least a tree or two in in a subdivision.
Gosh, I've seen some that have any at all.
Well, but, you know what the other thing we're fighting on that?
Flooding.
No, the insurance company. The insurance companies, I had to cut a tree out of my yard because it was too close to the house, period. I mean, they, they were like, "I'm not gonna ride it." I mean, until you get rid of that tree right there, so, I'm not trying, I'm just saying, we can work, but we need to be looking at ways to landscape in a way that maybe the trees don't, maybe they're not huge trees. I mean, maybe they're, you know, there's just a lot of ways to do it. Maybe it's more shrubs up around the house, you know?
I think we all would like to have those kinds of things, those pictures you're showing are aesthetically pleasing, and they, I think, are important. But at the same time, just keep in mind, what I'm saying is, we wanna be careful with that, we don't create an ordinance that's gonna overburden someone, they develop something and they're in here complaining about it.
But we're, right, but we're not changing...
If I may, though, if I may, the, the problem that we have with the developers we have, they scout the land. I mean, they take every single thing out, and the flooding...
I'm not opposed to that, I'm just telling you, be careful, I'm just telling you, there's gotta be a balance in this stuff.
Well, that's one of the things that we've tried to do here, too, is we've tried to give patenting them more flexibility, like, where you can come, you know, where you, well, and what I mean by that is like, when somebody comes in and says, "Well, I wanna..." If you keep this tree and move your building over here, then that, let's work towards that, you know what I mean? And then you won't have to plant fifty trees down the road that you can't water.
I think there's a way to do it.
Right, there's a way to write it, too.
Well, it's written, I mean, we, the ordinance is there, it's just, it comes down to enforcing and educating.
The interpretation of the ordinance by the, so...
We have the late, most lenient ordinances of anybody in the United States, just about.
Be careful, don't compare ordinances, those type of ordinances...
Any kind of building.
In incorporated areas, they're opposed to the unincorporated areas.
All right, now, look, we have, we do have, and one thing I did not mention, is there are little different standards for forty-nine, and for six oh five, and for sixty-seven. Now, to me, that's where we need to make any difference. I mean, now, somebody out in the rural county, I get you, but still, that doesn't mean that they need to be able to just go put, I mean, I don't know, but there's ordinances for it.
I understand what you're saying, I, I can appreciate that. We, we need something to work with like that, but if, if, if we're trying to do the same thing that cities are doing, that's not quite, I think, feasible.
Yeah, well, I don't think, I don't think we're there with this ordinance, but it sure give that.
But all of this is your, what you're suggesting as...
That's right, no...
Ways to change our ordinance or to...
To enhance it. We're really just...
At the end of the day, doesn't this board have this final say on whether or not those changes are...
So what's gonna happen from here, this is kinda give y'all an idea. We're gonna take this to the planning commission, and then we'll actually go through the formal process of getting the ordinance approved, and then we'll come back to y'all for the final approval.
Now, just, just from my point, I don't know if this president will, when we propose a sign ordinance, old Hades broke loose in the unincorporated area of the county because of the sign, a proposed sign ordinance. So, Patrick's aware of that, so be careful about that because...
It was about fifteen years ago, though, and we've become such an urbanized city county. I mean, we're an urbanized county now. And I'm not, I'm not talking about, Marlon, going out to your property and saying, "You didn't cut, you cut a tree," or, you know, I'm, I'm talking about developers that come in and just rake the land and...
But an ordinance is an ordinance, is an ordinance. So, once, when and if this passes, it, we can't pick and choose who has to live by it, it's very...
I think you can, and you can, you can.
No, you can't, you cannot.
Because what she's saying is, is Joe Smith, that knows this ordinance back and forth, has read it a hundred times, is gonna be calling us saying, "I want that person arrested for charge."
Now, y'all are going a little bit too far. Have y'all ever been to Fairhope, or have you been down on the way to Orange Beach or any places like that?
When you get into the rural part of the county and residential and stuff like that, they're...
But guys, this Chevron station is making plenty of money.
That's exactly why I'm finding it, you gotta be careful with this.
This Chevron station, guys, is making plenty of money, right here. There's no reason why it shouldn't.
And I agree with that.
I mean, and that's all, I mean, I'm not talking about going out here and...
So, can we do an ordinance specifically for new developers, development, and commercial?
What we have done, though, well, we separated that, that's one of the things we've done. We separated some of this out.
Okay.
And that's what I'm saying, like apartment complexes are different than single-family residential.
Okay, good.
I mean, if you're gonna come build apartments, if you're gonna make money, you need to maintain...
And anything commercial.
Right.
That's just like subdivision, the developer of a subdivision.
That's our biggest problem right now. And they've been meant to be, all relax, we do what we want. That's the problem that we're having right now, subdivisions and, and commercial.
I don't have a problem with some of that, I'm just telling you, like Sharon said, I'm with, you gotta be careful.
This will be something that's for y'all, so...
Thank you so much. Okay, we're at number six. Agenda items numbered six through sixteen have been placed under the schedule as appearing to be routine and non-controversial matters. Do we have a motion to approve six through sixteen? Do we have a second? Any discussion on this? All those in favor signify by aye. All those opposed, motion carries. Now, we're at number seventeen. Order spreading on the minutes, personnel changes for the tax assessor's office as listed on file with payroll clerk and personnel department. Do we have a motion?
Motion.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by aye. All those opposed, motion carries. Item eighteen, order approving in-counted travel reimbursement for the tax assessor's office as listed. Do we have a motion?
Motion.
Number second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by aye. All those opposed, motion carries. Item nineteen, order spreading on the minutes, personnel changes for the tax collector's office as listed on file with the payroll administrator and the HR department. Do we have a motion? Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by aye. All those opposed, motion carries. Item twenty, order approving travel for Trey McKnight, beatification director, to attend the 2021 Keep America Beautiful Conference. Do we have a motion?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by aye. All those opposed, motion carries. Item twenty-one, order approving travel for Trey McKnight to attend the 2021 Solid Waste Management Fall Conference. Do we have a motion?
Motion.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by aye. All those opposed, motion carries. Item twenty-two, county engineer, order rejecting the bid of JT Construction LLC due to the fact that the bid does not comply with the bid specs and accepting the lowest and best bid of DMP in the amount of one hundred and seventy-six thousand, nine hundred dollars for Harrison County DHS tower replacement. Do we have a motion?
Motion.
Second. I think I have a question on that. And Joe...
Tim, I didn't see that, did you read that? I didn't see any reason why we shouldn't reject that bid.
Yeah, there was something...
Well, it was always what I was...
Their bid was forty-one thousand compared to a hundred and seventy-six thousand.
No, this one was forty-six thousand, and the next one was a hundred and seventy-six, nine hundred, so it's a difference.
All the bids were around two hundred thousand dollars except for that one, something was wrong with it.
I just wanted to know what was wrong with it.
There were two specific things wrong with it. One, we verified with...
That's a big difference.
That low bidder, that they did not include the cost of the equipment that they were gonna install. There's a almost hundred thousand dollar piece of equipment to be installed that they did not include in their bid, and they also put a condition on their bid that bonds would cost extra, and those were specifically to be...
I think the guy with the low bid recognized he made an error, that, I mean, it was obvious he knew that.
It was a big difference, so... Okay, we have a motion and a second?
I would accept a little bit if he's willing to put that power in, which...
All those in favor signify by aye. All those opposed, motion carries. Item twenty-three, order accepting the lowest and best bid of E. Cornell Milan Corp. in the amount of three hundred eighty-eight thousand, five sixty-five, received on July sixteenth for the re-roofing of the DHS building in Cuffport. Do we have a motion?
Motion.
Second. Second. Any discussion?
We're only gonna put this on the board, no, the lowest, the best bid, the only bid.
Yeah, I saw that, we never...
Or roof, which is, anybody have an expat, why you only got one bid?
I know, there was a lot of solicitation to a lot of dinners, and that's, that's what ended up, we got it.
Or roof?
Were the specs drawn up, right? I mean, this is why I need... Do you have any thought process of why we only got... Only one roofing bid, I know there's more than one company that does roofs.
There are, I don't know why they did, we had a lot of participation, we had a lot of people asking questions, so asking things to discuss.
Jackie, let me ask you this.
Having a hard time getting...
Based on your knowledge, is that reasonable? Is that a reasonable bid for that roofing?
For that, for that type of roof, to meet the uplift loads and the warranties that we asked for, I think it is, yes.
See, that seems cheap to me, actually.
I think it's very reasonable, I think we expected it to be higher, but...
That's what I would think.
Okay, you, you think that's reasonable?
Yes, sir. And we did have a lot of back and forth with several roofers about warranties, uplift, how to make sure that it was taken correctly, and, you know, meeting all the codes and everything, and we felt comfortable with it.
What kind of roof is this?
It's a... No aggregate on it, torched down.
It's a flat roof?
Yes, sir.
What kind of warranty goes with that, flat roof?
Generally twenty without massive tornado uplift.
That's just contrary to, that's contrary to Mother Nature, flat roof just doesn't make sense.
Yeah, it doesn't. Any further discussion?
I, I do have one other, one other question. I, I, I don't know the specifications on the building or anything, but would it make sense to, any time that you were... It would cost a lot more, for example, with a gable roof or some kind of angle roof on that building?
It, it would, it's a very large roof, which would mean it'd have a pretty large structure on top of it. And it's, it's leaking, and it's hazardous right now, they really need it to get replaced quickly.
What you're saying is, the building is not designed to have that type of...
I mean, it's, it's possible, but it's not, and we can certainly look into that maybe over the course of a few years down the road, and look at that as an option.
Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by aye. All those opposed, motion carries. Thank you, Jackie. Item twenty-four, order approving payment of claims listed as recommended by Jackie Turner, P.E., here's county engineer, do we have a motion?
Motion.
Second discussion, Jackie. Why, we, why, there's two of them, I think, that we're talking about, right? One coming up after that one. What is the deal, why are we changing those plaques? I, I don't really think about it, I'm just curious.
Twenty-five, twenty-seven.
We're on twenty-four.
We're on twenty-four.
Twenty-five.
Twenty-four, where we're...
Twenty-four.
We got two payments, one to Lamy Electric and one to Pickering.
Oh, wait a minute, I'm jumping, I'm jumping ahead, I'm sorry.
That's okay, all those in favor signify by aye. All those opposed, motion carries now, okay?
Yeah, I'm sorry.
I have twenty-five, order, order approving the replaid of Lot fourteen, Pastor Chan, our subdivision to divide the existing Lot fourteen and combine with the adjacent lots thirteen and fifteen located in supervisor building district three as recommended by Jackie Turner. Do we have a motion?
Motion.
Do we have a second?
Discuss, Jackie, one.
These, these are individuals that wanted to purchase three lots and turn them into two, so they're each taking half of the lot in the middle, so this is adjusting that plaque to accommodate that.
Can they just have plating without approval of all the others?
I don't think the board has any authority to, to change the plaque.
That's what, that's my question.
I sent you the email, the attorney general's opinion says it's my statute. Now, this is nothing more than selling a lot, half of a lot. It doesn't require a re-subdivision, they can sell half a lot.
Based on what you sent last week, right? This was already on the agenda when we had that communication.
Right, that, that's correct.
Yeah, they could each buy half of that lot, then, and they...
They're just buying half a lot, and they... They're just buying half a lot and they still have to comply with whatever the regulations are dealing with the subdivision, but they can just split the lot. So I don't think that's something the board has any authority over.
To change that plat.
Right, to change the plat.
And the same with number twenty-six?
Same would be with that.
Twenty-six, I didn't quite understand what they were doing there, but, because they are renaming a lot there, which would require, but the board still doesn't have authority to, to change a plat unless all the. If all the owners came in, you probably could replat it, but in order to change a plat, the other people in the subdivision own lots, have a right to keep it like it is. So they have to give their consent if they don't want to change that.
So since we've got a motion on the floor approving the replat, we need to fix that, number twenty-five. So we need a motion to rescind?
No, I, I would say twenty-five, the board should decline and reject it.
Okay.
Reject.
So the motion is to approve. With that in mind, the motion is to approve. All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye. No.
What is it?
We need to.
All those opposed.
You're voting against it.
Motion. I was trying to tell Rebecca, I didn't.
Yeah.
Now we're at number twenty-six.
Yeah, and I'm not quite, they're not, this is different. They're trying to rename the lot.
They're trying to move a lot over.
Can that replat?
Let me read it.
I think based on your description last week, that this also qualifies as one that probably should come back off, but we never did get there finally, when the agenda was already.
Well, number twenty-five, those people can do what they're doing, but they don't need board action.
Correct.
Number twenty-six, because they are changing the lots, that's gonna require replating, which is the change, or the change of court has to do with it, not the county.
In effect, what they're doing is one parcel is selling part of their lot to the neighbor.
Now, they can sell part of a lot without, without.
Replanting it.
Now, the lot stays like it is, just becomes owned by two different people. I mean, divide however, they divide it, the west half, east half, fifty feet of law, whatever they do, stays platted like it is, so I don't think they need board action to do that either.
So right now, we should just do a motion to withdraw item twenty-six from the agenda or just give it?
Deny it, do, do something, just vote no.
Okay, so we're approving the replat of lots fifteen and fifty-one to your subdivision to divide existing lots fifteen and fifty-one into new lots fifty A and fifty-one A. Do we have a motion?
Motion.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
No.
Motion.
Wait, Ken, you just said no, but you said yes.
Y'all go saying no, because.
He said, he's under.
I wouldn't pay attention to that.
I was following you.
Yeah, no, I didn't pay attention.
Everybody's.
No.
I'm trying to have your back.
Right, you did, you did.
A suffer, just because you're reading that there, and just simply make a motion to deny.
Well, that's what I was thinking.
Just make.
We're doing it reverse.
Yeah. And it's easier then for you to do it that way. We kinda like going backwards.
Okay.
That's how, just make a motion to deny, or somebody can.
Correct.
I'm getting old as well.
So item twenty-seven, order designating Matt Stratton and Pam Horrigan as applicant agents to coordinate with FEMA regarding public assistance reimbursement for D R four five two eight COVID-19 projects. Do we have a motion?
Motion.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries. Item twenty-eight, this should read, order to adjudicate approving the deployment of Harrison County firefighting team and equipment under the EMA compact to Louisiana to assist with the community's impact by hurricane item. Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? So it's to adjudicate because they're already here. All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries. Okay, Supervisor Jones.
Yeah, I just, uh, wanted to put it to the board and make, like, any motion impossible that any supervisor or, or, I guess, county administrator that wants to go over to, uh, across the state line, go to Louisiana for any kind of assistance, will be allowed to do so, so we don't have to come back and adjudicate later.
So can we get a motion to extend the cross-state lines travel policy to any supervisor or their designated to travel to Louisiana to help with hurricane relief?
Oh, s.
Yeah, that's right.
Do we have a motion?
Second.
Second. Any further discussion?
Sure.
Yes, I'm sure.
All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries. Thank you. Item twenty-nine, order approving transfer of two thousand nine twenty-eight from line item oh oh one five two oh five one eight, five eight one, excuse me, to five two oh nine two one for the purp, just purpose of purchasing an ice machine from Associated Food Equipment and Supplies as a replacement for the Long Beach concession stand. Do we have a motion? Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
What, what two, what are those two line items, Pam?
What?
That is Parks and Rec's line item. He's moving it from contractual services into a capital.
So that's just, that's in within his budget.
That's within his budget, yeah.
Okay. Item thirty, order approving Jean Fayard and Joseph Thompson to attend drone class to obtain license to be held October four through seven at Hancock County EMA. Do we have a motion?
Motion.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries. Items.
Should've asked.
Zoning admin, I'm sorry.
I should've asked a question, but, um, does our mapping guy have the license already?
Should they?
They haven't gone to the.
They ain't gone yet.
Because it's different, you know, the mosquito control and child are different from the mapping.
Okay.
So he.
This is where they go in and spray, this drug.
But shouldn't he be licensed? Not to go to this, but shouldn't he be licensed?
In general.
In general.
Yes, he's supposed to have gone, but they canceled it because of the COVID and also they're resetting it, um, but he should be going. He, EMA and another staff member are supposed to go.
Okay.
I'll check on it.
Thank you.
Item thirty-one, zoning administrator, Mr.
No, no appeals today.
Yay!
This is, uh, cases.
Stop it.
Thirty-one through thirty-six, all standard cases before the plan, admission analysis, looking for them, and one of them has an existing mobile home on it, but each of these is for building a house, which is not unusual in that, so.
I don't like my homes. I don't like my homes.
Make a motion to.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All right, any discussion? All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries.
And your factory home.
I swear. Oh, that's.
It's like old woman, she was just bad.
He had a legal challenge on that one, you know, wasn't a part of that.
Old woman.
Item thirty-seven, order concurring with the road manager on employment as listed and as on file with payroll clerk and personnel department. Do we have a motion?
Motion. Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries. Item thirty-eight, order spreading on the minutes personnel changes the sheriff's office as listed on file with payroll clerk. Do we have a motion?
Motion. Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries. Item thirty-nine, order concurring with the county administrator on employment as listed on file with payroll clerk. Do we have a motion?
Motion.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries. Item forty, order concurring with the intervention board on appointment as listed on file with payroll clerk. Do we have a motion?
Motion.
Do we have a second? Any discussion? All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries. Item. One, I think. Discuss of per, purchase of flu vaccines administered by Med Analysis for Harrison County employees. Cost will be seventeen dollars a vaccine. Do we, who wants to lead that discussion, Ms. Patty?
Um, in the past, we, um, have been purchasing two hundred and fifty, um, for the county employees. So if we want to continue to do that this year, or we want to increase it, we may have more employees wanting to get the flu shot just because of all the COVID and, you know.
Patty, is that gonna?
That's what I was fixing to say.
I thought we were. Five dollars at one time.
This, this last year, it was like, it's free, I want to say fourteen or fifteen, because, um, those that weren't being, that we didn't, you know, give to our employees, um, at the end, if we got like forty, fifty of them left, we started offering them to their spouses or.
Oh, which I got to do with the cost.
They would pay that cost, and it was fifteen dollars, the same thing that, um, that we paid, so that's all they had to pay, they wanted those fifteen dollars. So we did, they went up a couple of dollars from last year to go on.
So what's the board's pleasure?
Do we have a choice?
We got.
So do we have a motion to go ahead and purchase the flu vaccines?
Motion to purchase.
Do we have a second? Any discussion? At Rhyma.
Ken made.
At seventeen, seventeen dollars per vaccine, Ken made the motion.
How many?
Two fifty?
Two.
Oh, yeah, two hundred and fifty.
Okay.
That's what I needed.
Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries. Item forty-two, order designating the purchase clerk, chancellor clerk, county engineer, and any department head as needed as the board representatives to receive bids as listed below. Do we have a motion?
Motion.
Do we have a second? All those, any discussion? All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries. Item board three, let's recognize the sheriff as the board's on the person's.
This morning, we had six hundred and forty-one total, thirty-six misdemeanors, ninety-one females, twenty that have lived state arrest, and thirty federal ones.
Sheriff, do you want to give us a fan here for me?
Yeah, we're gonna leave, uh, Monday, the thirteenth, we're gonna go to Grand Isle, but evidently there's nobody there. So, um, we changed it to Saint John Parish. Spoke to the sheriff over there, they've got us set up in a facility to feed, um, we're gonna bring all the supplies over there, they've got a distribution warehouse already set up for, I think, three of the parishes to come there and get it, so we're, we're gonna be serving three parishes, basically.
Okay.
We're gonna be set up to do about, uh, about four hundred meals, four hundred meals each, each setting, so breakfast, lunch, and dinner, and twelve hundred meals a day until, uh, till the sixteenth.
Perfect. That's gonna be, where's, where's the.
Question?
Saint John Parish.
What towns are, what cities are in that?
Grand Isle.
I ain't got a clue. No, it's not by Grand Isle.
Oh, it does say Grand Isle.
You went for it, Saint John.
Saint John's east of Homa, I mean, west, east of.
So Homa for sure, okay.
Yeah, east of.
I'm gonna come with you.
Grand Isle.
Can I go with you? You're gonna do it three days?
Says east of.
Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, and Thursday.
That's a question.
Travel, travel Monday, we'll set up a lunch on, on Monday, and dinner on Monday, and then breakfast, lunch, and dinner every other day.
Okay.
I have a question. Um, someone mentioned something about, do we have limits on how many city prisoners can be put into the jail? I told them, I thought that was.
We set it, yeah, we set it back for COVID. You have to limit their, their misdemeanors.
Okay. Remember their misdemeanors, is it five per city, something like that?
No, it's more than that, but, no, you have to understand, we've got, we went through all of last year with sixty cases, sixty-five cases of COVID, uh, running a six hundred and fifty count jail. Those numbers are phenomenal that we only had that many cases. How I eliminated those cases were the misdemeanors coming off the streets, going in there, sitting, and being released two days later and giving COVID to somebody else in there. So I eliminated that. They have a certain amount that they can put in there, and that's all I'm giving.
That's good. I just was curious, somebody had mentioned to me about cost, and we were having a debate, somewhat of a debate on, um, cost and cities and how much they pay taxes, that sort of thing, and it, and that came up, so I was, I wasn't aware of it.
They got a problem, they can call me, gratefully tell them what I just told them.
Okay, good.
Okay, item forty-four, order adjudicating signature board president, Beverly Martin, for the F five twenty-two occupancy protection grant agreement with Mississippi Office of Power and Safety. Do we have a motion?
Motion.
Do we have a second?
Second.
The deadline for this, just so y'all know, is September one, so we have to get it signed. All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries. Item forty-five, order acknowledging receipt of additional funds in the amount of thirteen hundred dollars for the Mississippi Leadership Council on Aging Grant for the Sheriff's Triad Program. Do we have a motion?
Motion.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries. Item forty-six, order authorizing brand new case construction and move forward with rebuilding the pole barn there's county sheriff's office work center. Do we have a motion?
Motion.
Do we have a second? Uh, discussion, what's a pole barn?
It's just a barn with a little roof on top.
It's a, it's generally a barn that's built with poles that Mississippi Power Company don't. You use a pole, man.
It's a covered shed.
That's what it used to be, now they.
Covered shed to protect.
Yeah.
All right, so you don't tie people up to the poles.
It's poles.
You are such a city girl.
Okay, well.
If y'all could with that, I don't know. All those in favor signify by aye. Fun to discussion, though, there were quotes on that.
I'm curious about that.
Sheriff?
Sir?
There were quotes, you got quotes on, two quotes in here on that.
Several quotes, yeah. It's all paid for through, uh, through FEMA funds. I think it came up with like four grand.
Yeah. Okay, well, all those in favor for the pole barn. Bye-bye. All those opposed, motion carries. Item forty-seven, order approving payment of claims as listed below. Do we have a motion?
Motion.
Motion.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by aye. All those opposed, motion carries, item forty-eight. Order approving low quote purchase for one twenty twenty-one Jeep Grand Cherokee from Champion at a cost of thirty-two nine eighty. Do we have a motion?
Motion.
Do we have a second? Any discussion? All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries, item forty-nine. Order approving the MOU between Pasquale Chan School District and Harris County Sheriff's Office to provide law enforcement services for two years. Do we have a motion?
Motion.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by aye. All those opposed, motion carries, item fifty. Order authorizing, authorizing the following line transfers within the sheriff's budget. Do we have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by aye. All those opposed, motion carries, item fifty-one. Order correcting inventory, adding back items that were previously disposed of that are still in use per the attached list, and authorizing inventory clerk to add back to the inventory. Do we have a motion?
Motion.
Do we have a second? Any discussion? All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries. Item fifty-two. Order approving mileage reimbursement for county travel for the following employees.
Motion.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by aye. All those opposed, motion carries, item fifty-three. Order authorizing board president to execute the law stolen affidavit, removing the following assets, and authorizing inventory clerk to remove the same. Do we have a motion?
Motion.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by aye. All those opposed, motion carries. Item fifty-four. Order authorizing board president to execute the law, oh, I'm sorry, I know a different one. The following asset and authorizing inventory clerk to remove the same from inventory. Do we have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by aye. All those opposed, motion carries, item fifty-five. Order authorizing disposal of assets per the attached list. Do we have a motion?
Motion.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by aye. All those opposed, motion carries, item fifty-six. Order acknowledging the following, the July twenty twenty-one credit card claims as follows. Do we have a motion?
Motion.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries. That sounds, was that a type of, that sounds weird. Acknowledging the following, the July. Strange. Item fifty-seven. Order authorizing transferring the amount of eight twenty-three seventeen from the county attorney federal forfeiture fund, O two six nine oh oh nine five oh, to the general fund for reimbursement of vehicle repairs to the county attorney vehicle.
I assume it's prosecuting attorney.
Uh, yeah, I was gonna say, I know this, this doesn't sound right. So we need a motion for reimbursement of the prosecuting attorney, not the county attorney.
Prosecuting.
Do we have a motion?
Motion.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by aye. All those opposed, motion carries, item fifty-eight. Order authorizing reimbursement to the general fund for work performed on the fire service vehicles. Do we have a motion?
Motion.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by aye. All those opposed, motion carries, item fifty-nine. Order approving the payment of claims as listed. Do we have a motion?
Motion.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by aye. All those opposed, motion carries, item sixty. Order rescinding agenda item number forty-nine of the December tenth, two thousand and seven, board meeting, which is an order requiring that a digital CD accompany all Platts of land properly recorded in the office of the chancellor clerk. Do we have a motion?
Motion.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
I'm glad you explained it, but.
Sorry.
We got it, okay, all those in favor signify.
Fourteen years ago, we put this in place for mapping. E nine one one, uh, GIS mapping, also the tax assessor. So now, because of the improvement in technology, and what, uh, we, county has been able to purchase in the chancellor clerk's office, we scan the Platts, becomes a digital record. The tax assessor feeds off of it, the mapping, and GIS map, uh, nine one one two. So it's no need to require CDs to accom, accompany new Platts that are recorded.
All those in favor signify by aye. All those opposed, motion carries. Item sixty-one. Order authorizing issuance of duplicate warrant in amount of two hundred and sixty-four dollars to Bobby Bass. Do we have a motion?
No.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by aye. All those opposed, motion carries, item sixty-two. Order approving request for payment of one thousand four thirty-nine forty-one to the Christiana Trust as guardian representing the tax, the tax year twenty seventeen. Do we have a motion?
Motion.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
I can explain. Um, Mr. LaRosa, when he left office, um, turned over two hundred thousand dollars, and that, at that time, was unidentifiable funds, and they did not settle out this particular refund for the year two seventeen, twenty seventeen, that the board ordered in twenty nineteen. So it's a request for payment that.
To that.
It comes out of the general fund, so that's where the money.
Where it went to.
Right.
Okay.
Okay, all those in favor signify by aye. All those opposed, motion carries, item sixty-three. Sixty.
Three.
Three, sorry. Order approving payment of nine thousand one sixty-two eighty-nine to Alter Planning and Design. Do we have a motion?
Motion.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Discussion.
Discussion. I actively believe in initiative. Is that what that is?
Yes.
That's the one.
I think we brought that up before, but didn't we just approve thirty thousand dollars for that?
I sent y'all an email, I sent y'all an email on the breakdown of it, um, so.
Well, I thought we just approved the, the Harris County.
That was the.
Just to get the grant.
That's what we talked about.
That was the study, but, um.
That was the study.
I have to go back and check my email, but I did send y'all an email and gave y'all the breakdown of it.
Yeah, I know, but I'm with Supervisor Lattner, I remember voting to approve the study, but I don't remember voting to, to design it.
We got the grant, and we're not paying more than the thirty thousand, but we're paying it upfront, we're getting reimbursed for it.
Okay, we're not paying more than thirty thousand.
We're not, not to exceed, I think our total is like gonna be twenty-nine thousand, so.
Okay. We approved a lot more than thirty thousand dollars.
That's what I'm thinking. There's a breakdown.
But we get reimbursed. Okay, that's all right.
All those in favor signify by aye. All those opposed, motion carries, item sixty-four. Order approving most holy trinitate Catholic church reuse of county equipment and hosting a church festival. Do we have a motion?
Motion.
Do we have a second? Any discussion? All those in favor signify by aye. All those opposed.
Wait, wait, wait.
Oh, I'm sorry.
In the past, the board has allowed this for churches as long as it was open to the public, and there was advertisement of county resources along with it. On this one, they don't mention either, so I don't know what the.
So how about we make a motion to do so with that caveat that they have to advertise county resources?
And it's open to the public.
And that is open to the public.
Okay, you amend the motion, is it?
It's open to the public, that's obvious.
Right.
So you want to amend the motion?
Only if you're Catholic.
I don't know, more or less. I don't know, let Methodist come up in here.
It's open to the public.
With your wallet being open as well.
Signify by aye. Do you amend it? All those opposed, motion carries. Yeah. Item sixty-five. Order approving nativity BVM Catholic exclusive use of county equipment and hosting its sixty-third annual Halloween carnival. Do we have a motion?
Can we make amendment to this? A motion. There's necessary to advertise county resources in counties. More than adjudicating, if that's necessary.
Do we have a motion?
Motion.
Do we have a second?
Second.
That one does say that.
Yeah, I was gonna say, I read.
The motion needs to say that.
Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by aye. All those opposed, motion carries, item sixty-six. Order approving City of Blox's use of county equipment next to assist in hosting Blox Seafood Festival pursuant to the terms of interlocal government co-op agreement between the city and Harris County. Do we have a motion?
Motion.
Do we have a second?
Second, is that okay?
Any discussion?
Okay.
Yeah, this is cities. All those in favor signify by aye. All those opposed, motion carries. Item sixty-seven. Order approving the DeIverville Civic Center use of, by the city of DeIverville pursuant to the terms of the interlocal government cooperative agreement between the city and DeIver and Harris County during the Cruisin' the Coast event. Do we have a motion?
Motion.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by aye. All those opposed, motion carries, item sixty-eight. Order adjudicating tax sale of August thirty-first on tax parcel zero seven one one K O two O six two dot zero 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 for the twenty nineteen taxes erroneous and thus ab initio, void ab initio for related purposes. Do we have a motion?
Motion.
Do we have a second?
Good job.
Any discussion?
Not sure this qualifies for voiding the tax sale.
Okay.
I mean, it's, all it is, is they changed the assessment, so there's not an error in the assessment. They changed the assessment. This happens quite often when they do not, when they apply the assessment wrongly.
So.
Okay, if they apply the assessment wrongly, then they'll do an error in assessment. That's what normally happens. I don't know in this situation.
Y'all want to table this until we find out?
I'll table it.
Okay, we entertain a motion to table item sixty-eight, for their information.
Yeah, I don't.
Make, do we have a second? Do we have a second? Any discussion? All those in favor signify by aye. All those opposed, motion carries, item sixty-nine. Order authorizing acquisition of certain property and declaring private property with the area surveyors scanning Mississippi to be necessary for public use for project SAP two four six one. Do we have a motion?
Motion.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All those in favor signify by aye.
Discussion, just, that's, uh, acquisition for the bridge?
Yes.
Yeah.
For the bridge. And most of them have agreed.
Okay.
There's one that's got some title issues.
Got a motion, a second, all in favor, say aye. All opposed, motion carries. Item seventy-one, order adjudicating insurance of notices to proceed to the following entities.
Wait, you skipped seven.
I skipped number seven?
Yes.
Yeah, I believe seven.
Oh, I should did. Number seven, order authorizing board president to sign a sign inspection and economic development acknowledgement for DIP funding related to the Mississippi State Veterans Nursing Home and Tradition. Motion?
Motion.
Second.
Second discussion, Tim, this looks like what he said, and I'll take responsibility, if there's a default on, on the number of jobs.
That's correct.
Not default, but they failed to accomplish a certain number of jobs.
Hundred, seven hundred jobs.
Hundred jobs, they say it's gonna create a hundred and forty jobs with this.
But he, he's, he's accepting the responsibility, not the board, if the job sales materialize, he's gonna pay the whatever is necessary back.
It's secure, but this is an amendment, he previously agreed to do what you just said. This is an amendment to that, their grant, and so their, their position is, and they've agreed that previous agreement applies to this extension or addition to the grant.
Okay, good.
But he has agreed to that.
The VA.
Any further discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye. All opposed, motion carries, item seventy, number seventy-one. Order, order adjudicating insurance of notices to proceed to the following entities. Motion?
Motion.
Second.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye. All opposed, motion carries, seventy-two.
Thank you. Item seventy-two. Order approving travel for any supervisor, county administrator, board attorney, road manager, engineer, comptroller to attend the MAS Fall Educational Workshop to be held October nineteenth through the twenty-first, twenty twenty-one in Oxford, Mississippi. Do we have a motion?
Motion.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by aye. All those opposed, motion carries, item seventy-three. Order approving installation of streetlights as listed. Do we have a motion?
Motion.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Discussion? All those in favor signify by aye. All those opposed, motion carries. Item seventy-four. Order adjudicating authorizing expenditures listed necessary to advertise opportunities and resources of Harris County. Do we have a motion?
Motion.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
All those opposed.
No.
Motion carries, item seventy-five. Order approving travel for intervention court staff in Tornon Taylor, Isaiah Hayes, Paige Beers, and Tony Freo, and Don Mills to attend the sixteenth annual MADCP conference in Massachusetts. Estimated cost two thousand six fifty-two. Do we have a motion?
Motion.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by aye. All those opposed, motion carries.
Don't have anything, Mr. Court has any questions, but.
Oh, Mrs. Lattner?
No.
Well, what about, Ms. Rockwood?
Um, I think there was a request, I need to get back with the, uh, Parks and Rec director, that it was to weigh the city to the DeIverville Footy League for practices, uh, deeper interlocal agreement with CIOs, DeIverville.
Oh, we need, did they send them?
I haven't seen anything, but I'll, I will, uh, get back with them then.
Okay, I'm sorry. Rosa Jones?
Yes, I do, I, I want to, uh, you know, I had an unfortunate, tough decision of, of, uh, my, when I lost my sister, Ms. Diane to Ms. Pam, I think she's the one deserving. So now I had another tough decision making, uh, no, actually, this is my new assistant, Ms. Diane tonight, very happy to have her. She has, she worked, come from senior resources, been at about ten years, so she served the county well, so far I think she'll continue her, uh, her duties.
Welcome.
Is she serving a senior citizen?
So sweet.
Well, half of, yeah.
So we'll give you John's number.
And that's all. Okay, okay, all right, that's all that happened.
Um, so I just wanted to make a motion, we've already talked about this, and legal said it was fine, and I want to make a motion to approve Friends of the Court program for Judge Margaret Alfonso.
Is that a motion?
Yes, that's a motion.
Second.
Okay, all in favor of that motion, say aye. All opposed, motion carries.
And then one more little thing, good news, we finally got the go-ahead, thank you to engineering. We will be tearing down the old used detention center, I'll be there with a bottle of champagne and a camera, if you'd like to join me. It'll be, it'll start September fourteenth, Tuesday, September fourteenth, that's gonna be a good day, that's all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Pam?
I just need clarification on the sense of budget, the proposed budget increases of fire statistics, salary, and cost of work increases? Or is that for everybody that is employed as a new state, or do they have to wait till their anniversary date like last year when we did that?
I want to try to look, go in and out, what do you think?
Well, I, I would give it some temporary time, maybe six months or still do a year, I don't know what if the board wants.
I like it temporary. Six months.
All right, we're doing a year, you know, aren't we, Pam?
That's what we did last year, they had to do it on their, you won your anniversary, and they got.
I would, you know, we.
But I needed another.
Whatever y'all think.
I, I think let them continue to work a year.
Okay, whatever y'all think.
And then, then that five percent kicks in, so they, they're not out.
So you have to be there a year before the five percent kicks in, okay?
Just, that's what we've been doing.
Okay, all right, do we need a motion for that?
I just needed to make sure.
I just made sure. Pam, y'all are working on. Pam?
Sorry.
Y'all are working on creation of the, the additional level for the, uh, CDLs, huh?
It was already included in the budget.
That's already.
Uh-huh, so he has that list.
Good.
Uh, so I'm not sure, we got a situation with the office space?